Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Ask the Voice of Authority, brought to you by Carter Jonas and GLE and London Square Partners and our new supporter, Haptic Architects. My name's Toby Fox, I'm the Managing Director at Three Fox, the marketing agency for councils. And our job is to keep our network of councils and developers and investors and their influencers and advisors connected. And one of the ways that we continue to do that is through these online interviews. And we're going to be back actually next week in person at the London Construction Programme's 10th anniversary party, to which you're all invited to enjoy drinks and food, a charity raffle and talks about inflation and labour and material shortages and what's the real cost of not building. And then in a fortnight, we're going to be back online with the new leader of Greenwich Council, Anthony Ockerecki. And two days later, on the 20th, a panel discussion online entitled Thinking Small for Big Results: Off-Site Manufacturer and Community Developers. And details of all of those events are going into the chat over the next few minutes. Back to today, though, and our latest interview with a public sector leader. And our aim with these is to give our network a deeper understanding of the vision for a place and how it will evolve by hearing from the people shaping that vision and what makes them tick. And by the way, you can find an archive of hundreds of written and recorded interviews at thevoiceofauthority.co.uk. Now, the format of our live interviews is really simple. We ask the Voice of Authority seven questions. The first three will cover their wish list and the challenges that they face to overcome that list, to deliver that list, I beg your pardon, and the partners that they're seeking to help them with it. And then we're going to ask our Voice of Authority what constitutes good development and who or what has shaped their views on growth and housing and the watershed moments in their life and career that have led them to our screens today. And finally, we get around to asking what they get up to outside of work. What are the interests and passions that drive and motivate them and perhaps shape those views and ambitions? And we're delighted that today those questions are all going to be put to the Cabinet Member for Housing Delivery and Homes at Bristol City Council, councillor Tom Renard. Now, Housing and Mental Health Campaigner Tom Renard was first elected councillor in Bristol in 2021, joining the city's cabinet immediately and pledging to deliver over 2,000 new homes a year by 2024, including at least 1,000 affordable, to provide more innovative low-carbon housing designs and to build more specialist homes for adult social care, to use stronger planning policy to deliver family and children centred communities and to introduce a campaign for stronger tenant protections. So how is the turbulent market affecting those ambitions and Bristol's partnerships? We're going to spend the next hour with Tom finding out. So let's begin councillor Renard, Tom, by asking what three things are at the top of your wish list for Bristol?
So this was a tough one when I was having to think about this because there's so many things I could put on it. But I think for me, they all link back to, you know, Bristol being a place we can all be proud of, that genuinely provides opportunity for all. You often hear about the sort of tale of two cities within Bristol. We want to make sure that what happens in the coming years, coming decades is about inclusive growth that everyone can make, can take advantage of. So I think for me, delivering more affordable and social housing, particularly in areas of growth and regeneration that we've got coming forward, which I could say a bit more on later, that also provides good quality jobs for people locally as well as obviously attracting new sectors in. It's probably at the top of my wish list. If we don't create good quality jobs, if we don't create good quality housing that's affordable for people, there will only be wider divisions. What you'll probably hear from most politicians that talk about housing delivery is my second one, and that's build more housing quicker. So and for me, that's about all stages as well. So whether it's trying to ensure we can get through things through that planning system quicker, obviously following the proper processes, but then thinking about what are the opportunities to then get housing delivered quicker once it's onsite as well? And what are the levers we can pull locally? What are the levers that perhaps government could pull nationally to help with that, particularly with some of the new, more innovative methods coming forwards? And then the last one would be remiss of me not to talk about the private rented sector within Bristol and sort of my ambition to have a fairer private rented sector. We've got, you know, real challenges here. And so having a private sector that works for all, that allows, that people can actually get a property, that they can get one that they can afford, that is a decent home is something that's a huge aspiration for us. So it's my top three, I think, among many others.
Thanks. I mean, you mentioned, I'm just going to very briefly ask you about this because it's not within your cabinet remit, but it is really interesting. You mentioned getting more jobs into the city and particularly attracting new sectors. So what sorts of new sectors does Bristol need? And what makes you think that those sectors can come to Bristol?
I think for me, one of the big things that I would like us to see really be focusing on is around sort of the net zero agenda. So and there's two bits to this. So thinking about housing delivery going forward around modern methods of construction, you know, I'd really like to see whether it's in Bristol or the Wacker, kind of West England Combined Authority region, factories that can deliver modular housing within our area. Because a lot of the modular housing where it's been constructed in Bristol at the moment is coming down the motorway from further up in the Yorkshire and Humber area, Derbyshire area. And so, you know, that'd be something for me, particularly as we've now got a advanced construction and skills college as part of the City of Bristol College down in South Bristol, where we've got our largest site, Hengrove Park, which will be 1,435 homes that are coming forward. And we're currently in the market for a development partner at the moment. I think the applications have now closed, but that process is ongoing where we're looking for that development partner. And then obviously we'll parcel up the various bits of the site because it's obviously too much to do in one go. So that's a big thing for me and making sure that we're aligning to take advantage of those opportunities, but also think about what are the future opportunities to make sure we're creating good quality jobs that are within sort of more that modular space for me. I think that's one side of it. But then linked to it, we've got a huge programme of work, which I'm less directly involved in, but have been hearing a lot about recently because of the opportunities for housing around City Leap, which is a partnership that we're entering into with Amaresco and Vattenfall. Vattenfall are a Swedish state owned company that do a lot around district heat networks to look at how we can decarbonise the city as fast as possible. We estimate that to decarbonise Bristol, it's probably gone up since the mayor said this, was nine billion. I think that was at some point last year. So if you think inflation since then and everything else, those costs are only going to increase the longer we leave it to decarbonise. So creating good quality jobs around decarbonisation that are there, because at the moment it's a bit fragmented, the work. So I think what we're hoping is that by having this 20-year partnership with City Leap, which will see £424 million invested over the next five years by Amaresco, this is all subject to Cabinet approval towards the end of this year, that that will really start to drive that forward and obviously create some of that market certainty as well to allow those jobs to come forward, to be created for, to encourage the colleges to make sure they're offering the right courses, educational skills as well for people to develop. But then we, you know, secure a long-term pipeline so that we see those jobs coming through and the people with those skills coming through rather than. So I think of what we had sometimes up until now around decarbonisation is there's kind of like this, there'll be this pot of money and then there'll be this year-long project, I think, social housing decarbonisation fund. This, I mean, I'm quite familiar with in that first round, it failed to deliver. A lot of the projects didn't deliver. And part of that is because of the skills and there's some really interesting work the New Economics Foundation have done as well around the Great Homes Upgrade, which we're supporting, which is really about creating green jobs, good quality green jobs. So we know we've got the workforce there to deliver this agenda. Because obviously, as everyone tries to do decarbonise, as everyone is trying to kind of retrofit properties, you know, the challenge is then have we got the workforce that can do that? And at the moment, we don't. So creating those jobs and making sure they're accessible for communities like parts of South Bristol will be really crucial.
Are you approaching that as a single entity, as a city? Or are you thinking of that in terms of collaboration with other places, Tom? Just particularly in terms of the sort of green economy and the connection with housing and skills and so on?
Yeah, so two things to say here. One, we're working with the West of England Combined Authority quite closely to make sure we're having a joined-up conversation. You've got City of Bristol College, you've got that South Gloucester College, both of which I have and will be meeting with and that my colleagues are meeting with. So it's really important we're thinking about that West of England footprint as well as Bristol as a whole. And then the other thing is there's the wider project around the Western Gateway, which covers a much broader area all the way up to Swansea, up to Gloucester and further down south as well, where we're thinking about where's the opportunity for alignment to bring investment in so sort of, so that we're able to kind of secure the investment, a bit like Midlands Engine and Northern Powerhouse, I think the other one's called, have done. So through working in that partnership way and really think about how we're aligning with sort of our economic institutions, if you like, such as Business West for us.
So it seems that housing is really a key driver for the economy in Bristol and the South West generally. You talked, I mentioned a pledge that you made to deliver over 2,000 new homes a year by 2024, including at least 1,000 affordable. How are you getting on with that ambition?
It proves to be challenging. However, I've seen a spreadsheet that says next financial year, we may or may not hit that target. It says 1,001 homes, affordable homes will be delivered next financial year, which I think is quite exciting. But I think it's, as we all know, in the construction industry, schemes can slip. And so we're just making sure that we, our data is as robust as possible to know what can we do. Are there things we can smooth out as a council? Because it's not always within our gift on a lot of private sites, but equally, it might be about discharge planning conditions and things like that. So make sure that that close working is there and that troubleshooting early on is there. I think helpfully for us is obviously quite a sizable sum of money from the Affordable Housing Grants Programme that is currently around. So we've got some registered providers, housing associations that are delivering directly or obviously taking up not just the 106, but in some schemes cases, the whole scheme. It's becoming an affordable housing scheme. So that's been quite, quite helpful for us. And I think we've got Project 1000 now, which is really our focus point to try and hit that affordable as we look to our council housing delivery. So we've got some schemes coming forward ourselves. We've obviously got Gorham Homes, which is our council-owned housing company, delivering sites. They're now onsite with their first scheme is through, I think it's going to go back to planning again, but it's through, they're onsite, they're doing work on it, which is really exciting for us. It just makes it all that more real and all those years of groundwork are starting to come to life. And then we're also doing a bit, which is smaller numbers, but still an important kind of part of our approach to housing. We've got some community-led housing coming forward and we have a land disposal policy of some small sites have been disposed of and some funding made available to support delivery of community-led housing in parts of Bristol. And alongside that, you know, we are looking, have done and are looking at further land disposals as well to support kind of the registered provider sector as well, because it takes every lever. It's not like one solution, I think, is the only solution. It's got to be about all of us pulling together and creating the right mix of opportunities so that we can make the best use of the capacity across the sector to deliver as much housing as possible, recognising the constraints we're living in. And if we're getting towards 1,000 affordable, I think what I would like to think is then we're also hitting that 2,000 target. There's quite a lag for us. Affordable housing, we know quite closely after the end of the financial year, what those numbers are looking like. For housing delivery, I think partly because of the way we do it here, it takes six months for those figures to report for the previous financial year. So we're just about to get last year's figures for what we've done on housing. So it's going well. I don't want to be complacent. I'm like holding the wooden desk right now as well. But it's definitely moving forward. I think we've got a bit more of a systematic approach to make sure we're focused on those schemes that can make the difference so that we can give people confidence that we are supporting the sector to deliver a range of products. But then also we're getting enough affordable housing coming forward. I think, you know, for some, and even the term affordable housing, when you're kind of talking about affordable housing within schemes, you look on social media, which I try not to do too much, you know, they're often questioning, well, that's not affordable to me. And because actually, when they hear affordable housing, it's often that aspiration of home ownership. And they're like, well, that's not affordable for me to buy. And our housing waiting list is approaching 19,000 households now for social housing. So, you know, there's real pressures there too.
Well, you've touched on some of the, some of the challenges that you face in delivering those ambitions. So let's move on to that section of the interview. Can I ask you about a local challenge first? How much of a difficulty does the mayoral referendum result present to you in achieving your ambitions? Do you see that as an obstacle?
I think there will be some challenges coming from it. In some ways, not, because, you know, it's about, once things are through planning and conditions are largely discharged. What I'm hoping is that, you know, there'll be that free flow for certainly the next few years of a lot of schemes that have achieved planning that can get on and get delivering. And I think at the moment, obviously, if you kind of take the mayoral layer away for a moment, to think about currently with planning, development control committees and licensing committee, and, you know, some of those are the regulatory committees that we've already got, this is an overall control council anyway. And so, and obviously, planning is quite a defined process. You know, every councillor makes their own mind up, doesn't predetermine. Although often you'll see schemes going through where it might, the voting is sometimes along party lines, which is interesting. So there is, there is a question about how will that shake things up in terms of the planning response, but also in terms of whatever types of housing are prioritised? What is that? Are we still going to continue to prioritise Gorham, community-led housing, council housing, delivery in the new kind of committee system? It's going to be, certainly going to be interesting. I didn't vote to go into a committee system. I voted to keep the mayoral system because I think that strong executive leadership model has allowed investment to come into Bristol. I think it's allowed us to accelerate housing delivery. And, you know, you can see the cranes are all over Bristol at the moment. There's a lot going on, there's a lot happening, there's a lot of new jobs and development being created as well. However, with regards to how I vote, you've obviously got to try and make that new, new system work. And a big part of that will be just making sure that we've got a system that balances absolutely kind of like democratic principles with the ability to still get things done.
Yeah, on that, is the result, which for viewers, in case you're not aware, is a move away from the mayoral system and to a committee system of local government? Is that result a demonstration of some resistance, you know, some pushback against those ambitions and all the housing that you've been talking about? Are local people saying, we don't, we don't want this? Is this a sign of that sort of thing?
Obviously, a question for, why did people vote the way they did? It was a 28% turnout, so it's still low. It's higher than the vote to go in into this model in the first place. But clearly, there were people that hadn't felt that the Bristol that was moving forward was one that they saw as including, as including them. And so there's clearly some listening and thinking to be done to ensure that as Bristol moves forward, that we do build a Bristol that people feel is for all, that they can see that there'll be a share of that success for them as well. But that shouldn't detract from, I think, you know, the fantastic work that Mayor Marmoset has led on in really kind of opening up this city to all those opportunities. And I think what that has also meant is a lot of change very quickly. Actually, you know, I came here in 2008 for university and in a lot of ways, the city, parts of the city are unrecognisable from the city I came to study in. I think that's largely a good thing. But, you know, we've clearly got some, some challenges we still need to grapple with.
Yeah. Yeah. And what about the wider challenge and the sort of national and indeed international economic picture of labour and material shortages and inflation and war in Ukraine and so on? How, what sort of impact is that having on your current delivery programme and also on the kind of longevity and duration of your plans?
It's certainly creating a lot, a lot of challenges for us. I'd imagine we're not sort of not an exception and probably the norm in that regard. I think the war in Ukraine has certainly created further challenges in terms of material shortages and the cost of securing some materials as well. But I think that the problems go further back in some ways. I think, you know, the decision for the UK to leave the EU and some of those relationships, it's not as easy to move, move goods into the UK from the European markets. We know that, developers have told us, that's caused us some challenges. And then I think there is obviously just a broader picture of inflation at the moment, you know, around, I think they obviously CPI, Consumer Price Index inflation, he's talked about a huge amount. But actually, the reality for the construction sector is it's been so much worse than even that measure for probably a couple of years. And when we're trying to get schemes over the line, or whether it's the schemes we procure directly, and you're then having to renegotiate the price because everything has shifted far beyond what was planned. And in some cases, that's meant, you know, developers have pulled out, we've had to re-procure. Or there's, you know, longer term negotiations, it's caused challenges there. We, you know, I was on a call this morning, it's a rich developer that was just giving me the example of things like a concrete core for something that they wanted, want to do that's in the planning system at the moment that has doubled in price and given it was going to cost them millions, adding several more million to that is proving huge challenges. So there's those. And then obviously skills as well and just there's, you know, shortages as well as of the people that we need within the market. I think it's a good time to be a bricklayer at the moment, I gather, in terms of you're sort of very much able to command the price you want for your skills. And that's the nature of the market. But how do we then get more certainty so that we don't see a huge slowdown in that delivery? And I guess for schemes that are onsite at the moment, hopefully, you know, those will, will be fine. But what about those next schemes coming forward? Because what we can't have is a cliff edge and then stuff, stuff not happening. And of course, I think internationally, there's still a lot of, particularly China is still on quite the construction drive. I'm aware of kind of, I've been following a little bit of the sort of Evergrande situation and some of that over there, there are obviously issues, but you know, there's a lot of capacity being used up to develop and deliver across the world. So we're kind of competing against that in Bristol. And so we must stay competitive and we must make sure those opportunities continue to come forward so that despite the challenges, we can still get homes built. The last thing I'd just touch on with this as well, though, is delivering affordable housing in that context, particularly social rent. So because, you know, we need more social rented properties. But it's getting increasingly hard to deliver them because the subsidy levels, you know, whether it's the 40% from right to buy receipts for the amount that we do have, but we're still a stockholding authority. Or sort of even the Homes England Grant, where it's typically around 30% of thing. It's not enough anymore. And so, you know, there was some broad conversation that needs to be had around how do we ensure the, the investment that is available from government schemes is the right investment to unlock new, you know, more affordable housing, including social rented housing? Because ultimately, that's good for the economy as a whole and good for everyone.
And are you onsite at the moment? Are you, are you having conversations with your contractors, with developer partners about the specific schemes and coming to new arrangements to kind of work around some of these challenges?
Yeah, we are. And obviously, it's, it's, each site will be different. I think to us, we've got to try and hold a line. But equally, we're aware that we don't want contractors going bust either. You know, we've seen some insolventcies even within Bristol. I think the most high profile of them probably recently was the Boatyard. So it's the Clarion Scheme over in Briston, Nitter Paint Works, where there's now a new contractor that's sort of getting going again, but mid-group collapsing, you know, was one that sort of sent a few waves through the markets. We know it's challenging out there and we want to make sure we're supporting our partners and the developers, either we're working with or that are delivering privately owned sites so that we can just understand that picture and also act as a voice as well. So, you know, if there were things we need to be saying to government and, you know, through other routes, through the core cities that we're a part of, then we want to do so. So keeping in touch with our, our partners, whether it's sites that they're delivering for us on or ones where it's wider affordable housing being delivered is crucial.
Well, this is a conversation we're going to take further next week at the London Construction Programme anniversary event, where we're asking if it ever becomes too expensive to build, you know, what is the real cost of not building when you take into account the sort of the waiting list that you mentioned for new housing and mental health and all those other aspects? And if we stop building houses now, the cost of that is coming towards us down the line. But for now, let's move on to the, to the next section of this interview, which is to ask you about partnerships, to ask you in part about, about working with those contractors and developers. What sort of partnerships are you looking for to, to help you deliver your ambitions in Bristol?
I think for us, it's about meaningful partnerships. So we obviously want people that are here for the long term coming in, coming into Bristol. We are aware that some that come in, they do the schemes and they go and if that's what they want, that's what they want to do. I think what we're interested in, people that are, are people and organisations that want to go with us on that journey of Bristol and the Bristol we all want to see, that city of aspiration, that city that is decarbonised, that city that has inclusive growth, that all communities can benefit from. And so, you know, I think when, when organisation invest in Bristol, we're very keen to see investment in Bristol because we really want to transform it. And that will certainly not, for me, won't change mayor or no mayor. And I'm hopeful that for many of my colleagues, won't, won't change either. Because, you know, we need to do right by our residents and we want to make sure therefore the organisations we work with share some of our social objectives as well as, of course, that, you know, their business objectives that they have to meet around and delivering a certain level of profit for the shareholder. It's about that kind of mutuality and reciprocity. I never say this word right, reciprocity. There we go.
Very good.
Yes. So, you know, those are quite important for us. And it's about open partnerships and open dialogue as well. You know, I regularly do meet and have conversations with developers because we're interested in hearing from people about what they want to do for Bristol and what do they need from us as a city and as a political leadership to help that happen.
And when you, when you sit down with a, with a potential partner, how do you evaluate whether or not they're the right people to do business with? I mean, there's a, there's a business case, yeah, but there's also that sort of element of personalities and kind of corporate values. So what sort of approach do you take?
For me, my bit's about making myself available to have some of these meetings. And of course, I have some very talented and experienced colleagues within our office team at the council that then will work on that due diligence, will work to kind of understand the detail rather than perhaps the top, top line of the conversation and really kind of explore what's right for Bristol so that we can particularly with our regeneration areas, make sure that we're working with the right people that have got the right intentions and that want to go with us on that journey and able to do that in a, in a partnership way. Partnerships aren't always easy, of course. Anyone that I think says they're easy is probably lying because there will be ups and downs. And, you know, I think sometimes it's making sure that we remember what's that end goal that we're trying to achieve, which, you know, certainly for me in my brief, is more housing, more good quality housing, good place making, and then obviously more good quality affordable housing that's affordable across a range of 10 years. So I think there's a bit about the kind of the multi-tiered approach. So us as political leaders, making sure that we're giving those, those messages of confidence and the right messages, but then also make sure we've got the right team of officers around us to have that experience. And we're really lucky to have some people that have got a lot of experience within industry and private sector as well that work with us at the council and also it'd be remiss of me not to mention Jess Sweetland, who's leads the Bristol Housing Festival project, who's done a huge amount of work to look at modern method of construction, the supply chain, who are some of the key players and how can we work with them around supporting the maturing of those pipelines?
Do you want to explain a little bit about the festival, Tom? Because it's not, it's not a typical approach to housing. How does it work? What is the Bristol Housing Festival?
The Bristol Housing Festival, and I'd encourage people to look at their website, started out as a five-year plan to get more innovative housing delivered within Bristol with a real focus on zero carbon housing delivery and with a real focus on modern methods of construction, modular housing and the different types of modular housing that there are. And it started out very much as an idea that I think Jess brought, brought to the mayor. And I won't be able to do it justice in the same way for him. But we took a punt, I say wiers in the royal way, and thought, right, here's someone that's got, got some clear vision and really wants to do something for Bristol. Let's see where this goes. And then there was a festival on the harbour side of various types of modular housing that people could go into, have a look around. And the funding was secured through an Innovate UK grant, I think of just shy of £3 million, which unlocked nine sites that were looked at and tried to kind of just try out different methods of delivery, work in partnership, deliver some ourselves. And I think, you know, we've seen some of those start to come forward now. So Bokluk on Airport Road is probably what I'd call the furthest advanced and is almost, almost complete. Bonnington Walk, which is one we've worked with LNG on. Bonnington Walk, uh uh, which is one we've worked with L and G on. And again, is one that's now moving forward. I think I've attended events later this month uh at that one. And then we've also got some, and those are kind of our bigger ones. Then we've got some smaller sites that are either just through planning or in planning. And at the moment, um which include Marshall Walk uh in in Scott. And we've got one in in Lotley's, uh, I think currently in the planning system. We've got another one called Bell Close, which got quite a lot of attention. It's in my ward, so I'm quite excited about it. It's my ward uh of of Horfield. And it's one that's on a former garage site. And so, because we've got a lot of small bits of land now, isn't much developable land left in Bristol, other than sort of these areas of growth and region. We've got a lot of small sites, former garage sites, low levels of occupancy of the garage is. And so, you know, trying out a solution there to see if if that's something that could work. And that one's um and was in uh in the Guardian. And so there was a lot of interest, Gap House. And it's called. So we'll have to see obviously what the the offices decide in a few weeks when that goes for determination of the planning committee.
That's a really interesting approach. And 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 you say that um Gorham Homes is also on site with its first scheme. So so in terms of delivering your your programme, delivering your ambition for housing in Bristol. How dominant do you see the role of of your own delivery mechanisms of of delivering directly? And and how how important is the contribution coming from outside from third parties?
So it's a very good question. So uh if I just take perhaps just sort of each of the streams in in turn. So for for our council housing delivery programme, um we've uh we got through our thirty year business plan earlier this year that went through budget. Uh, within that, we set aside one point eight billion pounds to deliver nine thousand new council homes over the next thirty years and two thousand of those within the next uh seven. And which we're uh really excited about. And obviously, that's still, um, we're going to be procuring some of those schemes or some of them will be delivered through Gorham. And and so obviously, there's the opportunities there. So particularly the the Gorham Homes model, if I just move on to that. And the way they work is largely for kind of a joint uh joint ventures partnerships model. And so Romney House scheme they're on site with, two hundred and sixty eight homes. Fifty five percent of that scheme will will deliver affordable housing. So about a hundred and forty seven of the units. And it's been done in partnership with with Vistry. And so essentially, Gorham, it's a bit more, I forget this, but Gorham bringing the land and then uh Vistry bringing kind of the the delivery. And and that's kind of the approach Gorham tends to take. Obviously contains risk and uh as well quite effectively. And and so that there are opportunities there in that partnership model. We're looking for a development partner at the moment with Hen Grove. And then obviously, they'll be looking at the supply chain to then go and deliver those parcels. And and then, of course, we know that there are many sites privately owns uh throughout the city. Uh, whether that's some with housing associations, some largely with private developers. And and we're obviously keen to support that delivery, recognising it's largely out of our control. And, uh, you know, the the planning system is the planning system and the policies are the policies. Uh, the thing I just briefly mentioned is we're in the middle of a review of our local plan. And so after two attempts, I think it's, we've given up on a West of England. Uh, uh, wide one, there was a joint spatial plan attempt, and then there was spatial development strategy attempt, but there are irreconcilable differences, uh, if I put it like that. And on on some things. So we're now focusing on getting ours over the line with updated uh requirements uh around, um, you know, whether it's biodiversity and thinking about net zero in the environment, what we're staying around affordable house and what we're saying around um transport, community provision, all all those bits and pieces. So that consultation will start later this year on the bit we are going to look at.
And and what's the timeline for sort of completing that?
Uh, we I think we're hoping to submit it to the inspector by next summer um for a for a decision. And so it'll be very much keep keep eyes peeled for those that are interested in in following that bit of work. Consultation will launch imminently. And it's it's um it's a follow on from the work that was done in twenty nineteen. So we're not reconsulting on everything, just the bits that we've, there's perhaps where the world's moved on.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay. Um, and it's time for us to move on to um what you consider to be examples of good development, Tom.
Oh, so I think one of my favourite ones um at the moment is a little project we've got here in Bristol. Uh, so Hope Rise. And which is a scheme we've got on a car park and uh in Saint George. And uh it's, what what it's done is because we focused the scheme on on young people and care leavers. And and then put what we would call community connectors uh in each end um of it. And is it, it's worked really well to support people to have have an opportunity to to have a place of their own. It's a modular housing scheme, Z Pods. And and I know there are lots of local authorities now talking to Z Pods about about what they can do. And but, you know, it's again, it was an innovative use of land. It's a nice scheme. And also that car park is next to um one of our kind of big parks within Bristol as well. So we've got access to sort of good quality uh green space as well on on their doorstep. So it's it's been really good. And it was the thing for me is it was innovative in that it was making use of an existing function. So it still functions as a car park. But it's also now providing housing. And so I say to my colleagues regularly, uh, are we gonna, uh, we're gonna roll this out elsewhere? And and I think
And what do they say?
Uh, we're looking at it. And I tell, there's a problem with us politicians, we come with lots of ideas. It's like, right, what order do we do we uh, do we put these in? So
But it's interesting, isn't it? Because because one of the big, um, there there's a lot of debate in in London at the moment around car park development and and the sort of the the loss of use of car park is is the the big oppositional point to to it. So if you can get around that, then that's fantastic.
Yeah, I think so. I think um I I guess the question is what what's the capacity of of some of those car parks and how well how well used are are some of them? But um I, you you know, it's, it's a good opportunity to to use a bit of space differently. And and I I just, I think that that's going to be a way forward, particularly in urban areas. You know, we we are about forty two square miles in Bristol. Uh, we don't have loads and loads and loads of lands if we want to protect green space, you know, when we're thinking about the climate and ecological emergencies. Then we've got to be thinking innovatively about how we're using existing brownfield sites, sites that might be being used for the types of land. We've got to have those questions about how far are prepared to go on height and density, which is very much a live conversation uh i- in in Bristol. And because, you know, if you if you're building more densely and and a bit taller, say within the centre of Bristol, you can design out car use. Uh, you can have all those those other environmental benefits. You put people where near to where the jobs are that are within walking distance. There's lots of practical things uh to consider. And and you know, this is one of the key things is whatever we do, no one's going to, or not everyone's going to be happy with it. So it's about, well, actually, you know, a bit like when a decision goes before a planning committee, what's the balance of benefit versus the balance of of harm? And we've got to decide what choices we're prepared to make and making sure cities are at the forefront of battling the climate and ecological emergency because of the way they're approaching housing delivery has got to be be there.
And in that scheme, you mentioned something called community connectors at at each end. Is that something physical?
Yes, it's people that are in either end of the scheme there on onsite, providing kind of mentoring uh and support to the young people uh within the scheme. We've done an evaluation um of the whole scheme and that Bristol Housing Festival have published a report um on it, um, which has been quite interesting. There's obviously a lot of learning that also comes from 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 these these types of schemes. And so now for us, it's like, right, well, where else can we do this in Bristol? And and how quickly can we do it?
And what what's, what do you, when you look at housing across Bristol, what's good and bad about about the building programme over the last decade or so? What what do you see that that is encouraging and good? And what do you see that that is bad and 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 needs to be stopped?
So in terms of good things, I think it is clear that people are thinking more about zero carbon and going on that journey towards it. And and that is definitely good to see. Um, I think we're we're seeing some really good quality schemes coming forward that have been worked hard on. I think I think where we've perhaps still got some challenges and that is what rightly quite an emotive issue is is thinking about um uh our natural environment, particularly trees. And and, you know, we've had had some schemes where and it it would be the view perhaps of of the public in in that area, that 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 not enough has been done around biodiversity and just thinking about greenery. And making sure that um we're thinking about those particular aspects, ensuring there's there's enough good tree coverage and that that the schemes are are nice to walk through if they're on natural walking routes. And so, you you know, it is important for people to think about um not just the need it meets now, because obviously as administration, yes, we will absolutely prioritise um schemes that are going to be delivering affordable housing, but it has got to meet our wider planning policies and context. I suppose one challenge we know that there is from from developers is, well, uh, our local plan is is old, as you know, it's twenty fourteen. Uh, it was, it was passed in. I mean, if we think about how much the world has moved on in eight years. And and so what we're hoping is to give a bit more certainty through our our updated local plan about what we want. And so that developers know, like, do not do these things, do not bring a schemes that that do these things.
We we ran a a site tour in East London of a a state called the the Gas Coin neighbourhood in uh Barking uh last week. And I think what they said was that the uh they put a red line around the value engineering on on the scheme and said, you know, whatever value engineering you do, uh, you're not allowed to touch the the green space, the pocket parks, and you're not allowed to touch the brickwork. Those were the two things that were no-go areas for for reducing cost. And as a result, they've got a place that's emerging, which is full of lovely little parks and green space that's really well managed. Uh, and this sort of varied brickwork that gives lots of kind of visual differentiation all the way through the 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 urban space. So it's quite an interesting uh approach. How confident are you that the that the need for biodiversity, that the 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 need for low carbon development can withstand the kind of price pressures and cost pressures at at the moment?
It's a fair question and a and a fair challenge because I think sometimes um I do appreciate with developers, sometimes it feels like we've just got our Christmas list out and go, right, we want this, and 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 we want this. And but but, you know, I think we do need to might for particularly for the net zero uh agenda, you know, this is about, yeah, think about the cost of energy um at at the moment. Um, it's it's about building homes that we know people can afford to live in. And as as much as anything else. And I appreciate that that does eat into, you know, again, construction costs and materials. And I think maybe it's wishful thinking. I'm hoping that will settle down in the coming years. And it it's a tricky one. I think the reality is it's it's getting more expensive to build homes. And so what's the solution to that? And I think, you know, some of that has got to be a uh government funding solution, particularly for the affordable housing uh delivery and making sure that uh that funding is there. I think the Affordable Housing Grants Programme I touched on earlier, I think they're already at like twenty twenty six level of what it's kind of costing to deliver homes where they'd anticipate those costs would be. So and there's a bit about that piece, you know, wh- what are we going to do to invest in decarbonisation and invest to make sure schemes are able to deliver on their aspirations? I think the other thing I find quite frustration when you get into those kind of particularly circular movements of value engineering and everything else, say with our council schemes or or through sort of our Gorham Homes delivery is. And that's also costing you money. Uh, because the time spent doing that is time you're not on site building. And, you know, for me, it's about how can we make sure that we 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 do those things as quickly as possible properly, of course. And because there's there's other costs, isn't there, of 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 it taking too long to get on the site, get the homes built at the moment?
Yeah, and and it's a, it's a human cost, isn't it? And and okay, let's let's move on to the next section of the the interview, because I want to know uh who or or what events have have most influenced your views on on housing?
My my dad in particular, I think my dad finds it quite ironic what I I now do, given I went to uni, studied history and then law, decided not to go into law, set up a charity, then got elected as a politician. And and ended up in housing because my dad was in construction uh for his whole life. And
In what capacity?
So he was initially at at um like Wimpey's possibly, uh and then Tilby Douglas, which became into serve um delivering on on the site and then project managing and then went on to become the the managing director of the Interserve kind of construction arm uh of the business overseeing much of their kind of public sector uh contracts. And so I did uh see many a school. And or even a prison, actually, went into one of those when I was ten, not not as a uh criminal, just to be clear, and to have a look around. So it was, and that was quite interesting for me, you know, as when I was quite little, just sort of seeing seeing this stuff go up and seeing the drawings when I was in the office uh with him sometimes, drawing on those A three pads uh that they used to have. And and so I guess
That gives you a sort of a particular sympathy for 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 contractors and the construction business?
Yeah, I've I've seen it from the other side. And uh interesting in terms of what what some of those challenges can be when they're delivering particularly complex, big construction projects with national government or with local authorities. And and he's he worked all over the country, uh, uh, you know, Peterborough, Sheffield, up up in Scotland as well. They also did um some energy from waste uh contracts, which I know um I've got a particular sympathy for. So when they go well, they go well. Uh, but when they don't, um, they could be quite complicated, quite expensive. So, uh, but it's always given me that interest, I think, in house building. And and broader just in in investing in infrastructure, delivering infrastructure, it creates good quality jobs. And it gives people opportunities to to learn um as well, because even though I didn't directly go into construction, um, you know, it's always something I've I found of interest. My brother uh works in product design, computer aided product design. So he's kind of gone down that and similar route. So it's, he's been a sort of a big influence uh for me, particularly my my current work. And I can have a conversation. And so I and in the nice way, some of the developers on the call, and I'll know when I'll get my leg pulled as well. And
Can you, can you imagine a a sort of future career in in the construction industry?
I have to see where life takes me. It's been um, it's been a bit of a whirlwind eighteen months. And as you said, I I came straight into Cabinet after getting elected, so three weeks. Um, after I was I was elected, uh, which was a pleasant surprise, um, uh, having worked. And I've set up my own charity, done a bit of work with a national mental health charity as well, and also set up another organisation that there's a lot of kind of campaigning. It's now a a national movement. And it was nice to see that recognised, be given that opportunity to to influence. And it's and it's been nice to be in a position where you can actually influence change and and help make a difference to people's lives. And I think, you know, the um, I've not had the opportunity to do this yet, but the thing that's always stuck with me from from the mayor is, um, you know, handing over the keys to someone. Uh, and that difference, it makes that life, that security and stability it gives, uh, it gives to someone. And i- i- is awesome. And you know, you can therefore see the the real world impact for that individual from this kind of what might be quite macro, big, big picture stuff that you're doing.
So so what was the 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 sort of influence in terms of um mov- moving into into politics? Why? You, well, tell us a bit about your background in in mental health as well, you know, who who or what was was sort of guiding and leading you and 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 influencing you in those career choices?
Yeah, so I I think I've got my own lived experience when it when it comes to to mental health, my my own, my teenage years. I think when I came to university, um, uh, at U E Bristol, I've I I had some some very very close friends that had similar challenges. And and unfortunately, um, the three of those are no longer with us. And so it really kind of spurred me on to go, right, well, surely we can do better, surely we can have a better world and through have have mental health services that are able to meet the needs of people, make sure people know what support they can access. And and so that really got me into campaigning, got me to campaign at my university, setting up a mental health campaign network uh at the university. And it spurred me on to then stand for student union uh as well. So I did a year as the Vice President Committing Welfare at at U E Bristol in the Students' Union and had all sorts of um responsibilities there, everything from student accommodation, know your rights campaigns. And looking at kind of like our halls and make sure we have the the offer right to first year students in in halls. And to mental health, to sexual health, to international students. And um I had all the what would usually be kind of like the international societies, they're all part of my my remit. So I went to uh many uh a different kind of foodie events uh of different cultures, which was, which was awesome. And I met met some fantastic people uh in the process. And and then once I'd done that, yeah, um, I then was involved in setting up a charity um that has focused on getting people with lived experience involved in the NHS and and kind of shaping mental health support that's being delivered at the moment. We do that in Bristol and across the Greater Manchester area. So it's been a quite a journey. But, you know, linked to that whole kind of mental health piece is a lot of what affects someone's mental health and physical health to a large extent. And it's actually about sort of the wider kind of situ- social situation you're in. Have you got a secure, stable job? And what, you know, how are your finances? Are you in loaded debt? Or are you sort of more comfortable? Are you one paycheck away from losing your home? You know, what what are those things looking like for you? Because those are things that can make a huge positive or negative difference to you. And it's important that therefore we create vibrant, healthy communities, good quality places to live that support, support the mind and 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 the body to thrive.
So your attraction to housing, the influence on you going into the sort of ha- housing area is is directly linked to mental wellbeing?
Yeah, absolutely. And particularly that that piece of me around security, which is why I kind of campaigned around the private rented sector. Um, uh, as well, because it's for a lot of people at the moment. And it it's it's quite unstable and it's quite insecure, seeing then sort of section twenty one, so no fault evictions, uh, the use of them is back up to pre pandemic uh levels, and it, you know, it's it's has a human cost. And also has a financial cost because for us, it means we're housing more uh families and individuals in temporary accommodations as well, which isn't isn't good for anyone. So I see a huge direct link around that kind of safe, secure, warm home uh that you have, um, that it gives you some certainty to be able to plan your life around, to be able to put your roots down, to know that, you know, your kids, uh, you know, will be able to go go to that school and you know, go through the years at that school, you know, having to constantly move around the city. You know, go through the years at that school, you know, having to constantly move around the city or or further afield.
And who who in the field of housing do you do you particularly admire? I I I guess in terms of the private or the public sector?
That is a good question. I think, oh, I'll still go to probably name an individual, but what what I would say. Is, um I think politically, I admire anyone that that's brave enough to take on the housing brief at national level, because I think we've been through about twenty. Uh uh secretaries of state for housing, haven't we, over over the course of the last couple of decades?
Some of them not called Clark?
Um well, quite. Um obviously, being being a Labour Labour man, I've probably got more admiration for some than than others, but it is a really challenging. Um brief to hold, because it's a really complex policy environment with lots lots of moving parts. Um and it it's interesting to see how different different people have approached that over the years and kind of what what that has led to in terms of successes. But also what's been the unintended consequences uh of of that too.
Such as?
Um well, if we, I think we haven't got enough homes built, I I don't think, for for several decades. And so. Um uh one of the policy areas we 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 do need to see more of, um is is something that supports more house building, whether. Whether we need an arbitrary target or not, I don't know. Um but you know, I think one of the things that I was really pleased about, um. One time you'll hear me com- compliment a a Conservative government, uh was the lift of the borrowing cap for the H R A, because that was what was ultimately then. Gave given us the the space to think about what's possible for for us to do it and use our housing revenue account, which we still thought should have almost. Twenty seven thousand homes um to to use that kind of that buying power, that borrowing power that that gives us to to go on a council house building programme. Um which we're now starting to deliver on and and trying to kind of drive forward.
Great stuff. Okay, what are you, what are the the watershed moments in your in your career? And what what are the moments that have led you to to our screen today? As as Cabinet Member at Bristol City Council?
So I think one of the the big ones was one I already mentioned about my experiences at at uni with with my friends. And I also studied abroad as part of my. Uh my my university experience. So I was there, I did the equivalent of Erasmus, for those that have kind of come across that programme, but went to the US. Uh for it for a year, um very different uh world uh over there. Um.
How did that affect you?
I think it just broadened my horizons. It just kind of made me see the world in a much kind of bigger way than I had done previously. It expanded my international networks. Um as well, and just kind of make sure that I can kind of see. You know, see things from other people's perspectives, because as politicians, you know, we're often kind of quite focused on trying to get things done. You know, we've got a period of time where. We're in post, but it's important to bear in mind that it's it's really vital. We take people with us and just kind of understanding. Um how people see the world differently from you is is really important. I think the university broadly, but particularly the air board gave me that opportunity. Um to learn that and also gave me the opportunity to get involved in various clubs and societies. So there was a history society. Um out in in Virginia, I ended up its president uh for one term, and we did a whole symposium looking at Haitian history, because it was the year. That they'd had that very devastating earthquake, um flew someone up from the Caribbean uh to deliver a talk and um. You know, you know, it's it's trying to bring people together, get people to connect and talk to each other about different ideas, histories. How how we move forward and how we move forward in inclusive ways. It's sort of really kind of stayed with me uh since my formative years.
And what about your move into into politics? How did that happen? Was that sort of overnight thing?
So I I didn't join Labour until um the end of my. Uh kind of student union years, to be about May twenty fourteen. It was a party I felt was kind of best fit for kind of my values. And kind of what what I wanted to achieve. So I did the typical thing, which which some do, which where which may go into politics later, is stood as a paper candidate. In somewhere that uh wasn't going to win uh as a district councillor in South Gotteshire. Um but then when I moved back into Bristol and got involved in my local branch, they said to me, oh, you should consider standing. Um and really kind of pushed me uh to give that some thought. And so I was like, oh, you know what? Um I give it a go. Um and it was quite interesting, because for those sort of that we're familiar with Bristol's political situation. Bristol um went from a about thirty seven Labour councils down to twenty four and and the same as the Green in in the local elections last year. Um I um I was one of the two gains um in in the city, um because in twenty sixteen. Um seat had been lost by one vote. Um so you could really go to people, your vote really does make a difference. Um and put a nice glossy bar chart uh on the on the front at Weaker Pole. So um. So yes, it was really that push. And I think it's, you know, it's important that we do kind of make sure that where we see people with with potential, that are that are hungry to kind of make change. That we do open those doors up uh and encourage people. Um because having people around me that encouraged me to stand has meant I stood. Got got elected and now kind of able to do what I'm doing today.
And we've talked, I mean, you mentioned that sort of uh the sort of stewardship aspect to what you're doing, you know, the longevity of the city compared to any any single councillor's. Um uh um uh time in post. How do, we've talked also about about the Temple Quarter Scheme and the the the. How the duration of of a massive programme like that. And and you mentioned earlier a thirty year business plan for for investment in. Uh in council housing. And these are huge sort of chunks of time, and and your time as a councillor is is finite uh wi- within that. So. How how do you grapple with that um that idea that you're just there to sort of nudge things along? How 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 long do you intend to be part of the programme?
For me, also whilst we obviously want to look at the the quick wins and and the things, one, so we're seen to be having an impact, but also because, you know, we. Some changes do need to be made quickly uh for people. Um I I'm I'm of a view. That politics shouldn't be about short-termism. Um we need to look at that media medium, long, longer term picture. I know it's a view the mayor shares, you know, what we want to do is come twenty twenty four, regardless of of the political makeup of the council after after May twenty four. So want to hand over a council that's in good shape, that's uh financially steady. Um that that has had things set in motion that provide amazing opportunities uh for people across the city going forward. Obviously, the thing you have to kind of manage within yourself is, um well, people might take it in a different direction, they might can it. They may take credit for something that actually you've spent four or five years putting all that work in. But you know, for me, that's fine, you know, if actually the the object still gets achieved and. And we're we're seeing that inclusive growth and those opportunities come forward to people, then. Then that's really what what it's what it's about. For me, obviously, hopefully I'll be I'll be sticking around for a while, but elections of elections and. I think we've seen from politics in in recent years, it can throw up some surprises. Um but you know, I think for me, particularly with the thirty year business plan, it's going to be updated. Um every year. Um but hopefully some of the investments that we're setting up within that, which isn't just new housing delivery, you know, it's it's about obviously. Continue to focus on things like good repairs, fire safety, um but also eighty million into um retrofit. Um our council properties between now and twenty thirty, a bathroom replacement programme, uh not just for end-to-life bathrooms, you know, all those things that we're. Kicking off more money into eh uh estates and communal areas and blocks, you know, it's um setting things up and then just hoping that enough people kind of share. The vision of what of what you're trying to do, if they then want to put a bit of a different stamp on it.
And and are you hoping to be part of that for for a decade? Or or is this a sort of one-term um objective for you or?
I certainly hope to be around for a while. Um we'll have to have to see what happens. I think I'm quite keen to make sure we see some of these big regeneration programmes. Through as far as possible. Um there's some fantastic work happening uh across the city that I don't want to see. Uh lost. And even if I was um uh still not in a kind of a councillor role, I'd I'd still certainly be advocating in 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 other roles to to ensure that we continue to do the best. For the city and make sure that we are creating opportunities for all.
And that leads us nicely on to the last part of the interview, which is to ask you when what you're doing when you're not advocating for the city, when you're not um being being Cabinet Member for. For Homes and Housing at Bristol.
Yeah, I mean, I play, well, I haven't played for a while, but I try and play five-a-side, seven-a-side football uh when I can at my my local uh. Uh sports centre in Hallfield. Um uh I haven't picked up a golf club for a long time, um but uh you you used to play quite a bit of golf. And quite a bit of squash. Um and those things, I think it's quite good to to be active, it's quite good for the mind um as well, uh sport. Um but I also have a five-month-old uh daughter, my first uh child. Um so she certainly keeps my hands very full. Uh at at the moment, and I wouldn't change it for the world.
Is there a connection between having a five-month-old and and not having played football or or picked up a squash racket for a while?
Uh cer- certainly, yes. Yeah, um it's getting back into the discipline, discipline now, now that she sleeps uh sometimes.
How much of your interest in in both uh mental health issues and and now in housing takes up your kind of personal time? How how much of your your kind of downtime do you spend gennin up on staff, visiting sites, talking to people about? Work-related issues?
Too mu- too much of my time. Um it would be, it would be fair to say, I think, um you know, particularly the the role of of politics can can be all in. Consuming if if you allow it to be. Um and I'm um sort of kind of likes to throw myself into kind of opportunities to to create and make change. Uh and enable others to to make change. But I think it's 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 an ongoing kind of struggle, uh certainly for me, to kind of just make sure that I do create. You know, en- enough time for for family. Um and uh switch off, and I'm looking forward to at some point booking a holiday, and I don't know when it's going to be. Um uh and going away to to get that downtime, because it, we all need it, we all need to take that time to switch off. Um even if we we think we don't, we really do need that space to be able to cha- charge and reset, otherwise uh someone put it to be very well about buckets. You know, yeah, yeah, once your bucket is full, um you know, you you do need to make sure you can um drain it a bit to to allow new things to go in.
So are you not, are you not a great example uh for um practising mental health?
Um depends who you talk to.
I mean, in all seriousness, do you do you see yourself as not being affected by those sorts of issues? Therefore, you can sort of work and not have a break or? Because because you're a campaigner, you know, you're you're very active on on these issues.
Yeah, so I I think I probably need to practise more of what I preach. Um it'd be it'd be fair to say. Um I think for me. Um. I think it's, I know what to do. Um so at least that I'm able to take that step, you know, if I needed support, I would know where to go and and get it. Um and I work with with some fantastic organisations uh that that are doing a a huge amount, that I just sort of try and. Uh try and keep tabs on. But um it's it is important uh to make sure we we take the time for to look after our our mental health and wellbeing and. And that that's going to mean something different for for every individual. And you know, if there's one thing I would say as well, is it's really encourage people to. To talk about their wellbeing, talk about their mental health, do that for a medium that 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 suits them, you know, it could be, you know, yeah, I I quite enjoy my football. So actually going and talking about football and how probably how badly Leicester City are doing, they're my they're my football team, it's at least we won four nil yesterday.
Big result.
Um uh but you know, it's it's just about doing those things that that are good for your mind, remembering that you need to make the time and the space for those, even when it kind of. All feels very full on and things might be on on top of you, it's it's hugely important.
Is there anything specific you'd say about mental health, me- me- mental wellbeing um with regards to councillors? You know, is is there something very specific about about being a councillor?
It's been, it's actually been quite a topic of conversation for us in Bristol, and there's been extra training uh and support. Put on to kind of look at resilience, mental wellbeing. Um it it can be quite a demanding job, and I think one of the key things. Um that you 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 don't matter how much preparation you've had, that you're just not prepared for, is just some of the kind of the ritual. You can get online, uh in particular from from social media, uh because you're you're a public figure, you are accountable. Um some are more accountable than others, depending if they're holding additional uh responsibilities. And and that can be tough and that and that can be hard. Um. Like, you know, earlier this year, I switched my so- social media off for two or three weeks, just because you're. Um you need to get away from it. Sometimes that doesn't mean you're any less accountable, because you know, there's still the the formal process of cabinet for council scrutiny committees. And everything else. Um people can hold you accountable, but it can be quite tough, because you, you know, I I take my role very personally, very seriously. Uh want to make sure that um my time in the role is a good use of taxpayers' money uh as well. Um uh and that we're delivering what we can uh for Bristol's citizens. And not everyone's going to agree, and and that's fine. And if there's one thing I've had to learn to do is not take it personally. Um for when for when people are um sort of going for you on on social media, because you know, it's it's also kind of, you you're making change. You're trying to make change, you're trying to make that happen. And and when you're doing that, it's going to create opinion, and it's going to create lots of different. Um uh opinions. Um but it can be, it it can be hard. And I think. Um for us as politicians, political leaders i- in the city, I think it's important for us to also. Remember about how we approach accountability and scrutiny and doing that, doing that in the right way, um that gets the right results.
In in the sense that you can justify what you're doing, you can talk to people about consultation, about democracy, about. You know, the wishes of the majority and those sorts of things.
Yeah, it's it it needs to be, you know, if we're going to encourage more people to come forward, be be councillors, I'm I'm one of the younger ones. Uh on the council, so at the age of thirty-three. Um but if we're going to create it as an inclusive space where where more people are going to come forward, because. Um um you know, they they may have barriers that they face, and then it's got to be an environment where they they feel able. Able to do that. And you know, if then they, if some people took a look at uh, my social media is by far not the worst, but you know, particularly some of the. Targeting the mayor gets, for example, you know, some people do include, and same with MPs nationally as well, they kind of concluded, is that something I want to put myself through? And so you know, there is there is still work to do there. What's that balance between holding to account? Uh and going and going too far and and creating an environment that makes it very difficult to operate in and for for others to want to to follow. Because politics needs to be accessible for all, politics needs to represent all people. I mean, that's that is difficult to do, but it's. Um you you've got to start by having, you know, range of ages, different ethnicities, you know, good gender balance. And uh sort of those other um demographics, and you're only going to get that if if people feel like they can come in, that they're going to be supported. That it's going to be uh an inclusive space.
And on that optimistic note, uh Tom, it's uh time to end the interview. So please accept my warmest thanks for taking part. Uh and viewers, our voice of authority today, Cabinet Member for Housing Delivery and Homes at Bristol City Council, Councillor Tom Renard. And as the virtual applause is is ringing out, uh I'll thank you viewers as well for sparing your time to tune in and uh learn about the man. Helping to shape the vision for Bristol. Uh now then, we're going to be back on the thirteenth in person with the London Construction Programme. In London at a party to which you're all invited. Uh and on the eighteenth, online with Greenwich Leader, uh Councillor Anthony Ockerecki. Uh and on the twentieth with Style Homes and their guests for a panel discussion about modern methods of construction and community land trusts. Uh and details for all of those events have been uh in the chat and are at threefox.co.uk. So until then, uh from our voice of authority, Councillor Tom Renard, uh from Carter Jonas and G L E and London Square Partners, and our new supporter, Haptic Architects. And from me and from everyone at Three Fox, good afternoon.